Okay, we have our full committee now seated, so I will open up this executive committee And the second item on the agenda was put there in error, so that's going to be only one item on the agenda, and that's the timekeeping software. And so, we will listen to presentations.
If I may, Mr. Onjel?
I remember you, somewhere in here, you have the order, okay. Front, is it front, no.
First, we have Ms. Connie Davis and Associates with Kronos Timekeeping System.
Ms. Davis, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for seeing us today. We appreciate the time to represent our K-12 expertise and our experiences in K-12. My name is Connie Davis. I am your account executive, but also cover the, all of K-12 and public sector in the state of Louisiana. I live in Alabama, so don't hold that against me. And then Gary Stevens is our sales director for the public sector in K-12 for the south central region. I'm going to not introduce the other two guys because they'll play into the story here in just a second. So Kronos, a few years ago, decided that they wanted to better serve their customers, so they decided to create five different verticals. And basically, those are all industries. So healthcare, manufacturing, public sector was one of those. So all of the resources, both sales and service, divided into those verticals as a company. Then, a few years into the public sector deviation, they decided K-12 was another sub-vertical that needed to have its own set of resources. So that's where Linda, Ms. Agadis, comes in. She is our program director for our K-12 practice. She comes to us from the city and county of Denver, where she served for many years as a payroll director. And then, within her purview, she has created a team of dedicated, experienced K-12 staff that does nothing but K-12 implementations and has either worked at a K-12 in a K-12 environment or has worked on implementations just for K-12. So they speak the language, they show up with solutions and best practices. And one of those resources is Rob Tibbs. So Rob comes to Kronos from an assistant finance director position at Jefferson County Schools in Alabama. It's a very similar district to yours. He's going to talk today about the deep knowledge he has in K-12, the experience that you're going through. The solution he's going to talk to is the exact same solution that they have selected and implemented at Jefferson County Schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob and let him tell our story. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So as Connie said, I'm Rob Tibbs. I come to Kronos from Jefferson County Schools. You know, like she said, I implemented the Kronos solution in Jefferson County. It's the second-largest school district in Alabama, employing approximately 6,000 employees to include substitutes. When we embarked on a, you know, a workforce management solution, you know, we were looking at where we had a completely manual timekeeping payroll process that we were looking to automate, streamline, and make more efficient. And as I embarked on that project, I quickly realized that we had compliance issues just about at every level. So those were some of the challenges that we were faced and that I find that a lot of school districts face when they're looking to implement or automate in a timekeeping Some direct and more specific issues that we faced in Jefferson County and that other school districts faced, number one is compliance risk. When I took over as the assistant finance director, specifically over the payroll department, I quickly realized that we had potential compliance risk and issues at every level, whether it be employees misreporting time or, you know, having more of an honor-based timekeeping system, you know, to employees working off the clock potentially rampantly to where we had, you know, issues at the school level with time cards being changed, principals making changes. And even as a result of a lawsuit, we identified issues within the payroll department, too. So it was very important to us that we address our compliance issues and tighten that up so that we were more in compliant with FLSA, FMLA, and ACA. And also tying into that is, you know, just the sheer fact of efficiency and the way we were processing payroll was so manual and all the hours that employees were putting in to process a payroll, it just was not very efficient, which tied to some of the compliance issues. So we were looking to streamline that and make the process more efficient where we could reallocate those resources to do more that impact the classroom than spending tons and tons of time on administrative tasks. Secondly, is tracking extra duty. So extra duty is a huge pain point in K-12. One thing that I realized as a payroll accountant and then when I took over as the payroll director, you know, we had extra duty time that was being tracked on separate time sheets for all those employees. So while they had one time sheet for their regular job, they had other time sheets for all the extra duty jobs that they were performing, whether it be, you know, ticket-taking at ballgames, tutoring before and after school. And it was very important, as we looked at automating a solution, to streamline that, get all time worked on one time card so that we had a true representation of all time worked for that employee. And that not only goes for your non-exempt hourly employees, but also your teachers. They're not subject to overtime, but a lot of teachers work extra duty, and it was important to have all that time reported, be able to track that more efficiently, and pay them more efficiently and accurately as well. The third component that we faced and we wanted to address when automating and that school districts across the country face is tracking substitute time. In light of ACA, it's very important that you track actual hours worked for subs. And then, in a school district environment, it's not only important to track the sub-time, but also link them to the teacher that they're working for, because in most cases, you can leverage the funding source of that teacher to pay the substitute. So when we're looking to streamline and automate that process, we want to have one time sheet that records all time worked for the sub, but link them to the teacher. In Jefferson County, in order for us to do that, we actually had the subs sign in on the teacher's time sheet. So that gave us the ability to know that, you know, Ms. Smith was out and Ms. Davis filled in for them as the sub. Well, what we found as we were embarking on this project was that that didn't give us visibility into all the time worked by the sub on one time card. So that was another challenge and something we wanted to address so that we had all time worked on one, in one place. And then, the final component was giving our principals the ability to make data-driven decisions. When we were on paper and what a lot of our principals faced and principals across the country face is not being able to adequately manage their workforce because they don't have this type of data available to them. So it was important to us to be able to give them the dashboards, the reporting tools that they needed to be able to manage, you know, whether it be absenteeism, on-premise reporting from a security perspective, or even overtime trending, you know. If you don't know that employees are potentially going to work over until a month after the fact, when you're on a more paper, manual-based system, so we were looking at ways that we could give them the tools they need to more effectively manage that and potentially reduce our overtime cost. So those were, you know, are the challenges that we faced and that we wanted to address in Jefferson County and that I found when I came onboard with Kronos, school districts across the country face the same challenges. In our work here, over the past nine months, I found Lafayette to be no different than what I faced in Jefferson County and what school districts across the country face. Some of the highlights that we identified, you know, are over and under payments, manual processes, you know, just like what I described that we face and other school districts face. ACA tracking was important and the ability to streamline that and more accurately report for ACA. Again, substitutes are hard to track currently, so, you know, it was important that we addressed that and have the, give the ability for you to more accurately track subs. Absenteeism is an issue here, and so, again, back to the data-driven decisions and giving real-time visibility into data allows you to have reporting and be able to see absenteeism trends for your employees. And then, the potential legal issues. You know, I mentioned, you know, one of the main things that brought us to evaluate a time and attendance system was, you know, FLSA complaints or legal issues that we faced. And a lot of those claims came around, you know, employees claiming that they were working through lunch and their principals were making them put the lunch down, or they were making them punch out or sign out at the end of their schedule when they were actually working more time. So we were looking to close the gap with those legal issues and better comply with FLSA. And so, I found, we have found that, you know, I think your district faced some of the same challenges that I've described that I faced and that other school districts across the country face. So the good news is, you know, I've sat in your shoes before, I've been on the other side. We went through an RFP process, you know, we evaluated multiple vendors, you know, my school district ultimately chose Kronos. And like Connie described, we have a K-12 focus, you know, around our, you know, time and labor management. So when it comes to our K-12 solution, you know, we have developed a solid solution that will minimize your compliance risk. So we will track actual work time, you know, everybody will have one time sheet that represents all time worked for the district. It's also important, you know, to note that this solution is more employee-driven. So it was important to us to mitigate those compliance risks by creating an employee-driven process where employees were more engaged in the process to minimize those compliance risks. So if that meant employees not only punching in and out, but that meant employees being in charge of correcting their own missed punch through workflow or approving their time card via an attestation message, all that tied into something that we wanted to consider and that we have developed in our K-12 solution. Also, when it comes to extra duty time, we wanted to simplify that. And the Kronos solution simplifies that to where the employee only has to choose the job that they're performing. So if I'm tutoring before or after school, I just strictly choose tutoring. And we have, you know, interfaces and logic built in our system that works in conjunction with Alio to ensure that that employee is not only paid for the time, but paid with the correct funding source and the right rate. Then, when it comes to substitute time, we have a couple of processes in place depending on the school district and whether you have a sub-management system. So it was important to capture actual work time for the subs. So subs will punch in, punch out, to capture actual work time and for ACA purposes. And then, to, for the link between the sub and the teacher, we interface with Smartfind Express to where we can feed that information into the sub's schedule, or that the sub can actually choose who they're working for when they punch in. So that, you know, improves the visibility in the sub-time. It gives districts the access to those subs so that they, the principals can see the subs that are on-premise in their building as well. And then, on the backend, it also ensures a seamless, you know, process into Alio to ensure they're paid from the, paid accurately. And then, finally, as I mentioned before, being, principals being able to make data-driven decisions. We wanted to give them the dashboards and the reporting they need, so we have developed K-12-specific reports that give the principals the visibility into, you know, whether it be extra duty time or whether it be, you know, the subs that are working in their building, or whether it be absence trending or overtime reporting. All those items are built in the solution and gives them, you know, easy access to that. So that's, you know, kind of sums up the Kronos solution, you know, what school districts are facing, what I feel like, you know, you're facing as well in your district, which is, you know, why you're evaluating the solution. But if we take a, you know, a deeper dive and we think about, you know, why should you choose Kronos, why other districts across the country are choosing Kronos, there's several points that I want to make. So first, you know, is K-12 industry expertise. As Connie has already stated, we have K-12 experts that are on our implementation team that either come from the industry or that are specifically focused on K-12 implementations to bring forth a industry configuration that includes best practices in the industry so that you're not starting over from an implementation perspective every time. So we come in and typically what I found in working with districts across the country is that our core configuration is approximately 80% complete out of the gate because K-12s are K-12s. And so, we bring forth the best practices model and we work with your district to evaluate what that model looks like and how that aligns with your policies and your procedures. Once we identify that, then we work with you to determine, do we tweak our system to meet your policies and your procedures, or do we potentially change your current process? And I've had success both ways, and it just depends on the situation. So the point there is we bring forth, you know, industry best practices so you're not starting over. Also, from our time clock perspective, the Intouch Terminal is the device that we have, and you have advanced and complete functionality using our Intouch. So I mentioned employee-driven transactions and employees being able to interact in the system for compliance reasons. So, you know, if we're expecting them to punch in, punch out, you know, request missed punches through the system, request time off through the system, approve their time card in the system, that's great and wonderful, you know, if they have easy access to a PC. But I know, for me, it was important that you be able to do that on the time clocks as well, because I had, you know, custodians, food service or cafeteria employees that didn't work from a computer every day, or maybe were not as tech-savvy as other employees. So I wanted them to have the ability to just go to that terminal and be able to do everything that they were supposed to do. And that's what our Intouch brings to the table. I mentioned extra duty, but I think it's important to bring it up again. Again, it's a huge pain point, but with our extra duty tracking, they will have one time sheet that represents all time worked, and that time will be logged and can be routed to the appropriate manager for approval. So for example, if I'm doing an after-school care, after-school tutoring program and that's going to be funded by Title I, you may want that time card to route or that time to go to the federal programs department. Well, that's all built into the solution so that even though they have one time card, the time that should be allocated to each department or other schools will flow to the right place. Calculated accruals, so even though your Alio system may calculate your sick, your personal, your vacation time, we will do that in conjunction with them, as well as calculate comp time if you allow employees to accrue comp time in our system so that they have real-time visibility into not only what their current balance is, but what their future balances will be, so that when they put in time off, it's validated at the point of entry. So that was huge for us in Jefferson County, and I see this, you know, in all school districts is that when you're on a more paper-based manual system, employees have the ability to enter or put time on their time sheet that they may not have, and then it's always on the backend that you're trying to clean that up. Well, with our solution, they're able to enter that time and it's validated upon entry. So whether they have the time currently or they will have the time in the future, all that's factored in and will be validated when the employee requests the time. Compliance, again, with FLSA, FMLA, and ACA was critical, so we ensure that as we're evaluating, you know, your processes, your system, that we consider those things to ensure you're compliant with that. Integration, for me, was big, and I know for you will be, too. You know, there's going to be other systems that you want to communicate with Kronos, the main one being your Alio financial system or HR system. So as part of our Kronos for K-12 solution, we have developed standard integrations with our K-12 partners to include Alio and the other, you know, Smartfind Express and others that are in the K-12 market. So again, we're not starting over. We're bringing forth a template, and of course, we can tweak it based on the needs of the district, but we're not having to start over. And finally, you know, I'll mention, it's not applicable here, but we do have multiple contract vehicles, but due to the RFP process, it's not applicable here. So that's a summary of, you know, why Kronos and how we feel like we differentiate from others in the market. But just to leave you with, you know, a few final thoughts, you know, I mentioned that, you know, I've been on the other side, evaluated a solution, and, you know, Kronos, to me, really differentiates, number one, because they bring a dedicated K-12 team to the market. I found that, through my experience, that that's critically important because K-12 is unique. K-12 does things different than other verticals or other, you know, retail, you know, or hospital institutions. So it's very important that your implementation team understand K-12, talk the lingo, and be able to, you know, guide you through the process. Specific K-12 functionality, again, that was critically important to us because, again, K-12 is unique, whether it be the fact that, you know, you have, you know, employees may work a four-day work week during the summer, or you have non-exempt employees that work different contract amounts and you want to track the contract time, whether they're working under or over. You know, you have weather events that impact your time card to where you want to quote-unquote "make them whole." All those specific things that are in K-12, we have built into our system. So again, we're not starting over, but we're bringing forth that functionality. And finally, you know, Kronos is the best in class. They're the workforce management leader. They've been around for 37 years, it's a billion-dollar company, so they spend a lot of time and effort and dollars in research and development and the focus around public sector and K-12 in general. So that, you know, is, to me, you know, what I saw in Jefferson County, what I've seen as I come, as I came onboard with Kronos to help other school districts realize the same value that we did in Jefferson County. And so, that's, you know, why I feel like Kronos stands out from the others.
So hopefully, Rob's story and his experience has shown you our presence in the K-12 market. I want to just tell you from a personal standpoint, I've been working Louisiana for two years now, and I've definitely spent a lot of time in K-12, and I applaud the, at least the effort to look at automating this process because we know it's a big decision, we understand that it's a, it's a serious problem that a lot of K-12s face. But Kronos is committed, this team is committed, to ensuring your success should we be awarded the contract. We thank you for your time today, and any questions?
Yes. Mr. Canizzi?
Dr. Argard, do we, what's the status of the RFP? Is it still active, or did we suspend it or cancel it currently?
We have not. It's not suspended, it hasn't been, we just, we've taken no action to this, to this point.
So we put out an RFP, we got the RFPs?
We did. We vetted the proposals, and we're bringing to you today three of the most highly rated.
Top three.
Top three.
All right. So I had a follow-up question on the contract vehicles you mentioned, and that was more of a curiosity question. I understand we still have an RFP out. But then, can you, you know, we have not seen the cost associated with it.
It's in the booklet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the very back.
Very back. And then, somewhere in the book, I'm sure it talks about, you know, our personnel costs are, that's our biggest cost. And so, that area has the biggest potential for, if we have efficiencies, the biggest potential for savings, although a large portion of those people are salaried. So is there an evaluation on either labor cost efficiencies or any sort of efficiency cost so we can do kind of a cost-benefit analysis? If it costs us to, you know, X amount of dollars to implement this, we can expect a payback in Y amount of years?
Yes, we do that. That's a standard preliminary practice we did, but because we were, we were, the RFP request came, so we can actually provide those numbers. But just, just off the top of my head, in Jefferson County's case, they saved basically 7% within the first 12 months on their leave liability, they reduced payroll processing time from two weeks to 20 minutes just by implementing an automated solution. But those case studies are in there that actually kind of document some of our customer stories. But if you want specific numbers for your district, we can certainly put that together for you.
Okay. Where is the cost at?
It's in there, isn't it?
I didn't either.
No, it's on the jump drive.
It might be in the.
Time might be up. If the cost is not in that, I apologize, we will get that to you.
It might be, I just haven't found it yet.
I couldn't find it either.
Well, we can go and print that and bring it right back to you. We made that change at the last minute to add it, so.
So is there a rule of thumb payback period associated with the cost?
Linda, do you know that number?
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
[inaudible]
and Associates with Frontline Timekeeping.
Afternoon, everybody.
So they'll be, they can see it on their laptop, is that correct?
It shows on our monitor right here.
Okay, perfect. That works by chance.
Get some cards on it.
Yeah, go for it. Thank you.
So handheld mic if you want to.
Okay. We stay here? We stay here, what do you recommend?
Whatever you.
Alright.
We're going to be recording everyone. I have a powerpoint. Get your camera.
Okay. Because if I go out there, I won't be able to see it unless it's over there.
It's on that screen there, it's on these screens.
Okay.
They have it on their screen.
Oh, it's everywhere. Alright. Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Joe, you ready? Alright, well, we'll get started. Thank you for allowing us to come and present. We'll try to make it as interesting and exciting as we can, as any PowerPoint can be. Ultimately, we're going to run through real quick, you know, talk to you a little bit about frontline education on the whole, but we'll also really speak into, you know, what we do from the time and attendance perspective. So what we call absence and time, so you'll hear me say that quite a bit, but it's really referred to as time and attendance when you look around the industry. I will encourage you to feel free to ask questions. I may table it until we come back to a different spot depending on where we are, but I don't want you to feel like you have to be quiet. You can feel free to jump in and ask anything you got. Well, my name is Seth Gers. I'm with Frontline Education. Jake Gross here with me is with Frontline Education. I've been with the company for about 16 years. I've actually been to this district and presented our substitute placement system around 10 years ago. So we're excited to be back. I'm really going to walk you through frankly, what we do as a company. When I started with the company 16 years ago, we did one thing. We only worked in K-12 school districts, that's it. That's alright. No worries. We only worked in school districts, that is all we did and are still that way. We only work in pre-K through 12. And back then though, we dealt with just a system that we call Aesop, which is still around within 7,000, 7,500 school districts around the country. Now we have close to 8,000 school districts using one or more of our solutions. But back then, we had one product. Starting about seven years ago, we expanded out, our goal being living inside of the K-12 space, but doing more than just substitute placement and absence management. And that is how we got into time and attendance with a solution called Veritime that was really built out of the rib of Aesop. Both of them together are the same user interface, are the same look and feel of the same product, they share the same database, and they allow our customers to track the entire loop of an employee's attendance. Not only their time that they clock in and out, but also the time that they're absent. If any of you are absent today and I was your supervisor, even if you didn't need a substitute, you would be able to call in sick into an automated system or get on the internet and put in your absence from home. And I would be alerted as your supervisor. Now on top of that, we can also get substitutes. Unlike any other time and attendance system in the world, we specialize in getting substitutes, calling your subs based on your preferences, similar in some respects to this solution that you use today called Smart Find Express. We can replace that with a more efficient, more phone lines, faster solution. Now, just as a quick high level, I'll tell you a couple other things that we do and then we'll dive right down into time and attendance. Starting, one of the things you already have, and this is how you got to know us, which is our recruiting and hiring system. Around three years ago, we partnered and acquired a company called AppleTrack and that is your recruiting and hiring solution that y'all use today at Lafayette Parish. So when you're posting jobs, looking for positions, looking for employees or substitutes, they can apply online to those positions. Now, as you can see on that left box on the screen, that's our, those are our recruiting and hiring tools. Some of them you have, some of them you don't. One of the ones we're most excited about is one called Employee Center, which really deals in employee records and is becoming the platform for all of our products, all of our solutions to live together, to where if I'm an employee in this school district, I can log into one place and enter an absence, clock in, apply for a job, apply for a transfer, all things that are human capital management or human resource focused. So that's some of our recruiting and hiring tools. It also includes things like substitute training, online training, helping you more efficiently deliver online training to your subs, whether you're talking about sexual harassment, bloodborne pathogen, anti-bullying, in-classroom recommendations and tools for them to help them inside of a classroom as well. So that's one pillar of our product and you already have parts of that. Another, I'll skip two to the right on that screen and you're looking at frontline, what's called frontline professional growth. We brought in a company and have now brought it into the frontline family over the last two years where it is a professional development management system and employee evaluation tool, employee assessment tool. So principals can sit in the classroom, watching a teacher evaluate how the teacher's doing, provide constructive feedback, recommend professional development pathways for them. And on top of it, this is a newer part of our solution and that is what we call frontline student solutions. So student solutions are focused on, right now, they're focused on IEP, Response Intervention 504 Medicaid reimbursement. So all, as you can see, all of that is K-12 focused. We're going to dive into the absence and time portion of it. So we're excited to show you some of that. Now, right now, you're looking at a screen that's really telling you some of the clients that we have in the state. I think almost all of them, save for one, is a user of our absence system. Around 10 of them are users of our time and attendance solution and a handful of others also, like you all, are on the list as well, using our recruiting and hiring solution. So Louisiana for me, having been here many times over the last 16 years, has been a great growth state for us. So let's dive into absence and time. Now, save, because we have about 20, 25 minutes to talk to y'all, we're not going to actually get into product and show you a deep dive into the solution. We can certainly do that at some point if you ever need it, but I'll give you some high level points of what our absence and time solution is designed to do. And at the end of it, really, we're helping you manage your attendance issues, manage your attendance for any employee, not just hourly. Lots of times folks think about, hey, I want to know, you know, the hours worked by my classified staff, the people that I need to track hours for. That is far and away the most common usage. However, we have clients that love to put their substitutes into the solution, so when the subs arrive at the campus, filling a job that they accepted inside of the absence and time system, they're also clocking in for that position that they've accepted. Absence and time for us gives you real-time visibility into, you know, who's at what location at any given point. From a security perspective, it's fantastic because you can always tell where someone is at any given point. Last place they clocked in would be at any campus you allow them to clock into. Nobody loves talking about compliance or, you know, state and federal compliance, but it also gives you a great window into seeing, you know, how many hours are my substitutes working? How many hours can I expect my part-time folks that are scheduled to be on, you know, 25 hours a week, are we in danger of them reaching certain thresholds? And if so, we have to, you know, make sure we offer healthcare to them depending on their employee type. So finally, I'd say the biggest reason school districts come onto our absence and time solution is really at the bottom there, ensure time card accuracy and ensure that there's the appropriate approval process from front to back to where you're able to more easily manage the process for your employees' attendance. The beauty of it is, and you'll hear me say this a couple times in this, in this presentation, is we're unlike any time and attendance system in the world because we started, we weren't one when we started. We started in 1998 as a substitute placement system. So because of that, we do a complete total attendance solution. We help not only on the time worked for your staff, but also for placing substitutes in the classrooms and capturing time off for your employees. The beauty of it is, is you can have one system. You don't have to have two. It's one login, one location for your employees to use on the web, one phone system. They don't have to have separate logins and separate passwords to get into multiple solutions. So we're going to run through a list of a few things that we'll kind of make pretty high level, but we'll dive into what really what each of, you know, what time and attendance does for our clients that are using our absence and time solution. We'll start with managing employee absences. And really, I mean, we got a screenshot up there, but that's one of, like I mentioned, that's one of the places we got our start and it really focuses on any employee in the district is able to at any given point with the appropriate login, they can enter an absence that their supervisor has immediate access to see. Now, if you're like my father, who was my principal, he still wants to see or wants to hear the employee call them and say, hey, I'm going to be absent, I'm sick, which is perfectly alright. We still get that. But in addition to that, your teacher or para or aide or aide or custodian or nutrition worker could also call in sick on the phone or on the web using what used to be called our Aesop system. I think that's the first time I've said Aesop. Aesop's a name that we are, we leverage heavily, but we've started calling it absence and time. So if you've been around in any of school districts around the state of Louisiana, it's been mostly known as Aesop, which used to stand for Automated Educational Substitute Operator. So managing the absence, also managing the approval. So if I'm a supervisor and any of you all are one of my employees that I'm charged over, I'm able to, in a pre-approval status, you know, if you're entering a personal day, you can enter an absence in advance as a request. It doesn't necessarily get approved until I review it and approve it. That's what we call approval workflows. You can have multiple approvers as well, to where above me might be Jake, who might be an area administrator, might be an assistant soup, can review it as well and approve at that level too. Also approving it for things like workflow or for payroll, which we'll talk about here in a minute. It's also a great tool for communication out to some of your employees. Substitutes is probably the best example, letting them know that, hey, you haven't worked as a substitute, you haven't worked, you know, your minimum requirement of, you know, three days this month. If you don't work those, if you don't work three days this next month, we may remove you from the list. Those are policy-based things that you can push out to your folks. Things like letters of reasonable assurance for substitutes, even bad weather days. You can, one of the ways you can alert your staff, I'm sure you have many different ways, but one of the ways can be Aesop and Veritime. Finally, helping you gather insights from a, you know, together an absence system and an absence, and a time and attendance solution, help you track, you know, when your employees are off, Mondays, Fridays, helps you, as you can see here, Fridays are the big day. If you're like 99% of all the school districts in the country, Fridays are the most common types of, most common absence. However, the hardest one to fill is not Friday. The hardest one to fill is Monday, because Monday absences come on Sunday night. That's when they get entered. So great insights into the, into the solutions. And I'll talk about this in a minute, but at the end, you know, we have some research that we can pull across all of our solutions to offer even a larger insight. I won't spend much time here, you're used to an automated system today. Ours is an amped-up version of that. Unlimited phone line capacity, unlimited web access, your subs and employees have the access to get to it from an iPhone, an Android device, any sort of mobile tool that they need to enter an absence, accept a job, they have a lot of capability there. On top of that, you know, you heard me mention a minute ago, but you can also make sure that, you know, subs that have gone through your online training, if you are using our online training tools, you can make sure that they are, they might be your preferred Tracking time worked, as you can see on the screen there, the way most of our customers have Veritime, what we call Veritime, used to call Veritime and now Absence and Time, there's a kiosk typically waiting at each campus at a school. It could be at the front, it could be at the back. It may also be something that they can access through a link on their desktop at their desk. They can double-click it, up pops an ID to where they can type in their ID, or in this case, in that picture, you can see where they can scan a barcode, they can use a RFID scanner, depending on how you want it set up. You got a lot of capabilities as to how you allow your employees to clock in and clock out. Here's some examples of the many, although frankly, the most common one is not even up there. The most common one is a older repurposed computer that you have at the district that you might not be using actively. Putting that in a, in a kiosk fashion at the front of a campus or front of a building is far and away the most common way. You also may have folks that are using an actual timesheet too. As you can see here, this is a timesheet. If they're clocking in or swiping in, that activity feeds a timesheet. If they're coming into the timesheet and entering or editing time, that activity feeds that same timesheet. Alright, so move from the capturing time to the processing time and absenteeism. So more, I sort of refer to this more as the backend of what our solutions do as opposed to the front end of capturing that time. Ultimately, as on the backend, you can have your administrators, supervisors, central office administrators have access to all of the time that's being captured at any given point. So you have a principal that can see for the 36 employees they have at their campus, they can see how many of them have arrived, if there's anybody that hasn't arrived yet. I can see if, you know, Mr. Agler, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, Dr. Agler, close, I can see if he hasn't clocked in yet. It'll say missing. But I know he walked in, so I can ask him and we can edit time as well. So it's real-time reporting on who's in the building and if he had called in absent that night and was sick, it would, instead of having him missing, it would say, it would have his absence and his reason for an absence. So it combines the absence system that you have in place today, capturing that leave with the positive time. Alright, approving timesheets. Now, this is more for the function of two things. One, making sure you have accurate data. So if in the future you ever have to audit or ever have to go through an audit, you can say, hey, in addition to capturing the time, our supervisors are approving the time for their employees. This is a great way for me to click in and say, hey, I'm looking at this person's hours or this group of people's hours and everything's accurate, I'm going to approve it. Instead of signing a timesheet that might get funneled to the central office, instead of doing that, I'm able to review it en masse, click approve. Now, it's funneled, I'm putting air quotes up there for anybody that can't see me, but it's funneled to the central office for them to be able to roll that data up and report it and extract it into your payroll and finance and accounting solution, which we do integrate with, by the way. So I think you have Alio, is that correct? So we have had a long-term partnership with Alio, both on capturing the absenteeism and sending those transactions over to the Alio product, as well as capturing time worked and sending that data over to the absence product. So as well as both sides of it, on both the absence side and the time work. That data can be rolled up into a format that is reviewable here, reportable here. You can do trends that look across the district to help you track trends at each school or each location or department and give you a great window into all of that time. One, again, for compliance and labor law tracking, but also for the purpose of getting that data into Alio. We would have a custom file that matches your Alio, not to bore anybody here, but your Alio import file layout. It knows what, how the file needs to look and feel so Alio can consume it. So there you go. That is running. That is run through our absence and time. The only other thing I'll mention is a repeat of what you're looking at there, which is, again, our frontline education suite of services, all K-12 focused. And what we're in the process of doing right now, we've rolled out parts of it today already, is rolling all of that data from the student solution side to the absence and time side, rolling it up into research where we can look at information across those solutions. For example, looking at professional development trends that affect your fill rate for substitutes. If you have a high PD day, what does that mean for your fill, for your fill rate? We can look in both systems at one time, which by the way, you know, we typically see the hardest absence type to fill are professional development, which shouldn't be the case because typically, professional development is something every teacher knows about three months in advance. But oftentimes, when you look at the statistics, those absences aren't entered into the absence system until one day in advance. So we knew about it three months ago, but it's not entered yet until yesterday. So great ways that you can look at the data across multiple systems and glean information out of that. I'll open the floor to questions, if that's appropriate. You're welcome to ask anything you have. I'm happy to, happy to listen.
Is there a, did you furnish us with the cost?
We did. I actually have the next slide, if you want to see it. We responded to the RFP, so I'm happy to go through that. Do we have time to do that?
Just a general cost?
Yeah, perfect.
What was the term you used, Erica? Cost-benefit ratio?
Yep, hold on here. I hid that slide and I didn't know if we were going to show that or not. Here we go. So there's a summary. It really breaks down to what we call an annual subscription and a one-time implementation cost. So the annual subscription, based upon the numbers that were provided in the RFP, it could vary if you change those numbers or if we change those, but roughly you're looking at around $52,000 a year, 51, closer to 51, and 14.5 for implementation. That doesn't include hardware, meaning those computers that you might repurpose or things that you can buy. We actually don't sell that hardware. So it's a much, we have a whole list of hardware we recommend for you if you're going to use it, but like I said, I think 80% of our clients don't use the devices. Instead, they use the repurposed computers or timesheets.
What, I have a question on the, on the computers.
Sure.
Like using those refurbished computers to sign in?
Yeah.
What's the ratio of computers at a school to the number of people signing in?
Got it.
In order not to have backlogs?
Yeah.
On in and or out?
Good question. So if you're at a campus, or I'll answer that a couple ways. If you're at a location that sometimes we call harder to serve because you have a lot of people arriving at one time into one spot, and that could be a bus barn, it could be a maintenance facility, it could be a high, a large campus. One, it's easy to quickly log in. You're typing in an ID and PIN, sign in, and you're done, and you're moving on. Now, it's a quick process. Now, you can, you can speed that up with a couple of those USB devices, like I plugged into the bottom of this computer before I started, so in case I wanted to use a remote device. Simple, just a quick plug-in, and it speeds it up, so I can wave a barcode across that or a proximity card close to it, and I'm clocked in faster. The percentage of devices, if you're at a high school, for example, with, you know, a higher employee population, typically there's two, two repurposed computers, might be three if it's, you know, larger. You could have one in the front of the building and the back. It just depends on where your entry points are. If you have several entry points, you probably want to have one at each entry point. Elementary schools, you have less folks that are clocking in because typically, in most cases, we don't, teachers aren't clocking in, or in-room, or instructional staff don't clock in. Probably 20 to 30% of our clients actually have them, they have them actually clock in or time in, just to let them know they're there. But it's a, at elementaries, it's typically one device. Locations like a central office might be one or two devices, depending on entry points as well.
Thank you.
You bet, you bet. Any other questions there? Well, thank you. We appreciate you allowing us to come. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, the last thing, I'll jump in there. Last thing I'll say, when we were meeting with the group in March, there were several things that we wanted to accomplish with meeting with you all. Number one thing is we want to reduce redundancies that we had within the parish that exists today around payroll and timesheet and absence. One big advantage of that was going, with partnering the frontline, as you're already partnering with AppleTrack, we can easily pull in that information to automatically make an account within ASOP, which will go right into Veritime, and they all communicate back and forth and can be uploaded into Alio. That is a huge advantage. You guys are going to be able to see with our system. And then secondly, paper reduction on lots of substitute paper going around the parish, which is typical, is what we see when we come in and do those kind of transitions. So another thing that we're going to be able to cut down quite a bit on using those three systems, communicate with each other. And as we continue our partnership down the line and we bring on multiple solutions, it's going to get lower and lower in that paper and redundancies. And the last thing I'll say is, we're excited about continuing to be a partner with Lafayette Parish, is that we have, we've been with you all for several years now. We have, I feel a pretty good track record on customer service and implementation. What you're looking at with, looking at different vendors come in, you're wanting those references, go back and talk to the people that are using AppleTrack. People that have been here, that have put that in and worked with us on our side, putting those in, have worked day-to-day to get an idea on what that looks like. There's no better reference than yourself and the people that are working for you already. So last thing I want to say on that.
Yeah, definitely. A hypothetical is someone you hire inside of our recruiting system, with literally a push of a button, you can send them directly into our absence system immediately, in the background, without keying that data in.
Again, thanks everybody for the time, really appreciate it. There's more of that cost breakdown within the RFP that we submitted, that breaks it down a little bit further, so, and we're happy to resubmit that to you. Thanks. Joe, good?
Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, sir. Thank you for your time tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for everybody's time here.
Board members, if I may, the last presentation, Jamie Blundell has had a family situation. He is going to do a remote presentation. Our technicians are going to get it set up if you just give us a couple minutes.
Good question, because I've left many a flash drive.
Yeah.
You probably have a bucket of them.
Guys have a bucket of them.
Thank you. Have a good day. Take care.
Thank you, guys.
Just make this phone call here.
Hey, Jamie. Still trying to get you stood up.
Okay.
Let me open up the...
It looks like there's an LPSS boardroom already in the meeting.
Yes, I'm starting the app now. Okay.
Is Joe in the room?
Yes, I'm here, yes.
Hello, Joe. Does everybody have the folders that I had FedExed over?
I just gave them, each member has a folder.
Great. Hello, everybody, I'm Jamie Blundell. Just let me know when we're ready to get started. And also, let me know if you can see my screen okay. I'm actually going to share my screen, hang on. Let's see.
Hello, I'm Jamie.
Just let me know if you can see my screen, okay?
There it is.
Should be a couple of boys sitting on a couch.
Sit.
Okay, perfect. How much time do I have? Could you just please refresh my memory?
You have about 15 to 20 minutes. And I would just like to introduce you, committee members, Jamie, Jamie was just blessed with having a child at home, and so under the circumstances, he and his new child and his wife, he's unable to make it to trip, but he's doing a distance presentation to you folks. So Jamie, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Yes, hi, I'm Jamie Blundell. I'm in charge of the public sector with Novatime. Today, we're going to introduce everybody in the room to the Novatime Time and Attendance System. And as Joe had mentioned, I did plan on, actually booked a flight and hotel and everything, but with the birth of my baby being over a week late, I had to rearrange some things. So thank you so much for understanding that and allowing me to demonstrate remote. Okay, so we're going to start a couple minutes in a PowerPoint very brief. I want to spend a lot of the time in the demonstration. Novatime is based out of California. As a quick introduction, we have about 50 offices around the US. We specialize in public sector, specifically schools, cities, counties, counties and towns. I just thought I would put a few of our references up on the screen. I understand that Lafayette Parish Schools uses Alio as the payroll integration that would be needed here. We have experience doing that. We integrate with over 400 different systems, and Alio is one of the existing systems. Ascension Parish Schools, also in Louisiana, also has Alio and uses Novatime. In the folders, there should be a reference page for Ascension Parish Schools, and with our original RFP response, we submitted several references for folks to call on. Also Falcon Schools, off the top of my head, I know has Alio and uses Novatime as well. A few things that I want to mention that separates us from the competition, our implementation is true fixed price. We don't charge for travel, so the amount of onsite visits that we would estimate throughout the implementation, if we end up doing more, there would be no change orders issued to Lafayette Parish Schools. We also don't charge for overages in terms of time. So if the implementation takes longer than we expected, there would also be no change orders issued to Lafayette Parish Schools. Support with us is available 24/7, and we don't outsource the after-hours. So you always get a direct Novatime technician certified in a Novatime product. Training is unlimited, so if we need to do refresher training sessions, in fact, as many refresher training sessions as we need, that's okay. There's no change orders issued to Lafayette Parish Schools. If down the road, after you're live, you hire a new person that would be a user within the software, we could train a new hire a year from now at no additional cost. And one last thing is that software updates are included with our proposal. That's very important because not all of my competitors include software updates. So our motto is software for life. 10 years from now, Lafayette Parish Schools will be on the most up-to-date version of Novatime at that point in time, not a 10-year-old outdated system. The process for implementation, I've included a page in the folder, should be on the right-hand side. It's a colorful page that looks like this. We're going to get to data collection in just a second, but I want to talk about, this is the very first step that we do with our clients. We have a kickoff meeting where we pick a go-live date together, and then we kind of work our way backwards from there. And this is a blueprint of what to expect throughout the implementation. There'll be some testing and training that we need to do. We'll have a couple different types of training, training for key users and training for supervisors. If there will be any time clocks, we'll need to figure out where will the time clocks be installed. And then for the software, we provide a rules questionnaire, which will identify to your Novatime technician, how do you want to configure the system? And you can set up Novatime many different ways with the rules. You can have the same rule that applies to all schools, all locations, or perhaps you have a rule that applies to a location level, so these 25 folks have a rule that applied to them, but nobody else. We can also go all the way down to the individual level. So within Novatime, you can have a rule that applies to Jane Smith and Jane Smith alone. You know, two employees could come in five minutes late, and that's considered late for one employee, but not the next. In regards to data correction, I'm just going to keep moving along in the interest of time. I understand that Lafayette Parish Schools is really interested in using a computer and perhaps a smartphone as the primary method. We call that employee web services. That's the ability for an employee to punch in at a computer, a tablet, or a smartphone. They can also do other things from a computer, smartphone, and tablet. So each of these features that I'm showing, you could turn on or turn off, one by one, employee by employee. So you could have, allow an employee to punch from a computer or smartphone, view their timesheet, view their schedule, see their balance of sick vacation personal days, request time off electronically, that goes right to a manager for approval. Should there be any employees that need to punch from the smartphone, maybe there's, you know, the majority of them just punch from the computer, or even a few punch from a time clock, we could still give everybody access to a smartphone, but disable each feature that we don't want them to have, so they don't have to be able to punch from the smartphone if you don't want them to. But again, if they do punch from the smartphone, we GPS track where the punch comes from. We can also set up geo-fencing, so the employee must be within a certain circular area to even be allowed to punch. We also have mobile apps for supervisors. So everything I demonstrate for you in a minute, a supervisor can also do right from their smartphone. They could manage timesheets right from their smartphone, correct missing punches, we highlight for you where a missing punch is. The manager could then click into the day where the missing punch is located and either be forced to add a reason or a note as to why they're making this change. In regards to the time clock, I'm only going to spend 30 seconds here, but there was originally some time clocks thought to be part of the scope of work here. If there's only a few, that's fine, but we offer the NT7000 as our latest and greatest. It comes as biometric or card swipe. There's a camera on here, so we can take a picture of employees every single time they punch. It can communicate through wireless, through power over Ethernet or standard Ethernet. It's multi-language. Employees can change the language from English to Spanish, French, or Chinese. If anybody does, it will default back to English for the next employee. If you go to the biometric model, we would enroll employees with two fingers, one on each hand, so if they hurt their finger on their hand, they could use their other finger on their other hand without needing to bother a manager. All data collection is real-time. If I punch in from a computer, a time clock, or a smartphone, it's always sent to the software immediately. If you lose connectivity or internet's down, the NT7000 would store the punches until your connectivity resumes, and all stored punches will be sent over to the software immediately. There's also an operational battery backup on this clock, so if you were to lose power, the clock will stay on for up to four hours, and people can continue to punch throughout a power outage. Again, the punch is being saved at the clock. One last feature to mention before we get to the demo is labor tracking or job costing. That's a standard feature with the Novatime. You can allow an employee to punch into a certain project, location, department, or task, or job, and then you can, as a manager, report back on how much time did each employee spend in the department, project, or task, or whatever the group is that you're tracking against. So, sort of a mouthful, but I'm trying to squeeze an hour presentation to 15 minutes. So that's data collection. Again, we offer the whole variety of computer, smartphone, and time clock. And the time clock could be PIN number, biometric, or card swipe. Getting into the software demonstration, our website, we list our payroll integrations. We have over 400 different payroll integrations, and you can see the whole variety, you know, displayed on the screen. And I've highlighted for you where Alio is located, okay, right here. So you see it's an existing integration. It's included at no cost. We probably won't have time to go over cost today, but in the folders on the back-left side, I included the pricing that we submitted with our response. So let's start with the employee side. This is called employee web services. It allows the employees, again, to do things not only from a computer, but a smartphone and a tablet. So just keep that in mind. Everything I'm demonstrating for you can also be done with a smartphone. I could punch from a computer by entering my employee ID number and password. I could hit the transfer button if you want to do job costing from the computer. You'll then see groups that come up. We can call these groups whatever you want them to be called, and under each group, you have an unlimited number of options. So you could have 300 departments, but this employee only bounces back and forth between two or three. They would only see the two or three to select from. They wouldn't have to scroll through a long list. Other things an employee can do, I can click the employee web services button to be taken to information about myself. The first thing that I see, the message that pops up, and that's from a prior demo, I requested time off, then I logged in as the manager, and I either approved it or declined it. So here, the employee's getting a note from my last demo. So I had actually requested to take a day off on 9/9, which is the date that my baby was born, and I had put at that point, I wanted to take a day off to play golf. My manager declined it, and instead apparently no more golf. I guess I played too much. So there's communication from the manager to the employee, and we can sync up those alerts with an outside email. So I can, if I request time off, my manager right on their phone can see the request for time off is made, and when the manager addresses the request, I can get the response back on my phone, so I don't have to be logged into Novatime to see this. There are three sections of the system that an employee can have access to, the attendance, the scheduler, and the expense. You can hide or disable any section of the system that I show. That's common throughout, not only the employee side, but also the manager's side. So some sections may not be relevant for all employees, perfectly fine, very normal. When we set up the system, you're going to let us know which sections are relevant for which groups. I could punch from a computer by entering my employee ID number and password. I could hit the transfer button if you wanna do job costing from the computer. You'll then see groups that come up. We can call these groups whatever you want them to be called. And under each group, you have an unlimited number of options. So you could have three hundred departments, but this employee only bounces back and forth between two or three. They would only see the two or three to select from. They wouldn't have to scroll through a long list. Other things an employee can do, I can click the Employee Web Services button to be taken to information about myself. The first thing that I see, the message that pops up, and that's from a prior demo. I requested time off, then I logged in as the manager and I either approved it or declined it. So here, the employee's getting a note from my last demo. So I had actually requested to take a day off on nine-nine, which is the date that my baby was born. And I had put at that point, I wanted to take a day off to play golf. My manager declined it and said apparently, "No more golf." I guess I played too much. So there's communication from the manager to the employee. And we can sync up those alerts with an outside email. So I can, if I request time off, my manager right on their phone can see the request for time off is made. And when the manager addresses the request, I can get the response back on my phone. So I don't have to be logged into Novatime to see this. There are three sections of the system that an employee can have access to. The attendance, the scheduler and the expense. You can hide or disable any section of the system that I show. That's common throughout, not only the employee side, but also the manager's side. So some sections may not be relevant for all employees. Perfectly fine, very normal. When we set up the system, you're gonna let us know which sections are relevant for which groups. The timesheet lets me view my timesheet for the pay period. These punches will be coming in from a computer or a time clock or a smartphone. Normally, I cannot edit this as an employee. We do have the ability to open that up, but that's very rare. This would normally be read-only. I could click the submit button to send it to my manager for approval when ready. I can set up a secondary message which this could read whatever you want it to read. Once I hit this one more time, it will send it over to my manager for approval. What else can an employee do? They can come in here to view their schedule. They can come into Novatime to view their balance of sick, vacation and personal days. We have an unlimited number of pay codes that we can set up with in Novatime. I can see for each bucket, how many hours have I used? How many hours do I still have available? And more importantly, why do I have this number available? All the time that I've taken or accrued, it's led me to my most available number at the top. To request time off, I jump into the scheduling section of the system. Here, I show different types of requests for time off. A full vacation day, half personal day, full personal day. I could just click whatever it is I want, paste it on the day, add a note if I'd like to. In this case, I'll just put playing golf. I can see my note there and I can click save, sending it over to my manager for approval. You see it says, "Please insert template," so you could actually define your own types of requests. Vacation zero hours, you could have any bucket with a zero hour option. This would allow the employee to request something unique. The system will prompt them for a start time, for an end time. And we can also handle fractions, so you can take an hour and a half if you wanted it. Okay, I wanted to show a couple more things before we get into the manager's side. I can view the history of my own requests. I can see anything in red has been declined, green is approved and yellow is pending. This is just my history. If I'm allowed to, I could see a shared calendar, which shows me everybody else in my department. So maybe you guys have a policy that no more than four people could be off on the same department in the same day. And I was just about to request the twenty-fourth, but I could see it's already full. We can also set up a rule behind the scenes, so if you fail to come in here and check and just try to request a day anyway, we could automatically decline it if too many people have already been off on that day. Okay, so that's the employee's side. Let's jump into the manager's side. How am I doing on time? How much time do I have?
You can, you got seven minutes?
Seven minutes, perfect. Alright, so this normally takes about twenty-five, but I'll get through as much as I can in seven. A manager can log in with their user ID and password and they could be allowed to see and interact with different sections of the system. The first thing that I see is that message that pops up because this manager is tied to the last employee. So when Kim requested time off, it sent Jamie a notice that he needs to do something with this. When I click approve or decline, it will jump me right into the scheduling portion of the system, where I will see the request in pending status. This is where I could change it from either approved or declined. And again, I will say, "No more golf." And I'm gonna decline her request right now and click save. The manager also has access to a shared calendar. So if they wanna first check and see how many other people are off on the same day, they can come in here and check, like for example, on the twenty-fifth, four people are already approved for this day and perhaps even though Kim had enough time left, I had to decline her request. If I go to the attendance module, here I can see an overview tab. It lets me see my school district name and how many employees am I responsible for and a quick snapshot of where are their timesheets. All the timesheets are still open. I haven't, any of the employees that are required to submit them haven't. This is a step that you can skip. If employees just punch at the time clock, the timesheets go straight from being open to me approving. But if you have them punching at the computer, typically they're required to submit them. In this case, nobody submitted. I haven't approved any and none of the timesheets have been sent to Alio. When I click on the summary tab, I could see who my five employees are. How many hours were they scheduled? How many hours did they actually work, regular or overtime? Absences, tardies, missing punches, you can sort these columns. So show me the employees with the most tardies or least with one click. If you don't have any exceptions outstanding, you can click one time and approve a hundred people with one click if you'd like. And that would be pretty rare. You will have some employees that have some exceptions floating around out there. So to change one-off things, you can go into the timesheet. Where if Kim, let's say, is missing a punch, we'll highlight that for you and show you where the missing punch is. So on Monday, she punched in but never punched out. Anytime a manager makes a change, we track all of that in the audit record. Okay, you can always run a report to show you who made a change, why did they make the change and when did the change occur. But without leaving the timesheet, we can just eyeball the timesheet to see if any changes were being made. So we put a little asterisk next to a time if it comes in from a supervisor manually. Okay, on a normal timesheet, you should see no asterisks. If a punch is coming in from a time clock or a computer, you would not see an asterisk at all. So a timesheet that looks like this would be a red flag. Why did all of the times come in from somebody manually? You can also put an audit column right on the timesheet. By the way, all of these columns that I'm showing are fully configurable. When I click on columns, everything on the right side is what my timesheet is currently displaying. You can change the order. And on the left side, we can, with your Novatime technician, customize your timesheet. You could pull in something like job and make job appear wherever you want. In this case, let's say the employee's always at 113 Chaplain Drive. So I'm gonna take location off and put job on. And so it's just a quick how-to to configure your timesheet. Okay, so one of the columns I have on is the audit column. This lets me see what changes were being made to this specific line item. So again, without needing to leave this timesheet and run a report, I can, while I'm still on the timesheet, see what manager was making a change, what was it before, what was the after and where did the punch come from. If you do end up having time clocks, we can label them as locations so you'll know which location they were punching from. And it's right here that you will see the information about mobile punches. So let me quickly go to a month that I remember I did one. First week of May, there was a conference in Arizona and I did a presentation in front of a hundred or a hundred and fifty folks. So if you see this timesheet, all the punches have an asterisk except the 4:42. When I click on the audit column here, you'll notice that one of the punches came in and I actually see the address of where the punch was. When I click view location, again, this punch came in from my smartphone, it'll pull up the map image of where I was. So here, I can see I was at the Phoenix Convention Center. Just takes a second through the webex we're running right now. Sorry, maybe this is my internet. Okay, so the manager gets not only the GPS coordinates, but you also get the address. You also get a picture of where the employee was. I guess, are we doing, are we holding questions for later?
We'll have those at your conclusion of your presentation. If any board members have questions, you can take them.
Okay. Okay, alright, sounds good. So I just want, again, I wanna show that the GPS coordinates will come up and that you have the pinpoint of where the employee was. You could also take this little man icon if you'd like and throw him in the street if you wanted to get the street view. But just in the interest of time, I'm gonna hold off on that. Okay, so let me go back to the current pay period. September. A few other things that the employees can do, they, I'm sorry, I'm in the manager's side. A few other things that the managers can do. They could view the employee's schedule. They can see when and where is the employee scheduled to work. They can view the balance of sick, vacation and personal days. Okay, so similar to how the employee could see how much available time they have and why, so can the manager. There are a couple of new tabs. Here's the work history tab. This is a color-coded chart of the employee's work pattern. When did they come into work, that's the color green. When did they miss a day, that's any other color. So when I'm looking at this, I'm actually hoping I just see only the color green. Okay, 'cause that means the employee was here all throughout the year. If they're missing time, like if they were sick or they took a personal day, I'll see new colors pop up and you will define your own legend. So for me, yellow is holiday, red is sick, blue is vacation. You can unselect these. So let's say I just wanted to quickly take a look at the pattern of when does the employee call out sick throughout the year. So I'm gonna leave on red, which is sick, versus green, which is a regular day. And here, I can see the employee has a pattern of in the summer, calling out sick on Friday. In fact, they've called out sick on seven of the last eight Fridays. You can also drill into the day to see if they were assigned something specific. So maybe I asked Kim to work the night shift and she called out sick. Wouldn't it be interesting if every single dime I asked her to work the night shift, she called out sick? We also can track exceptions here. So if I wanted to see, for example, how many times was she late throughout the year, I'm just gonna keep tardy selected and highlight the number one. And any day where she was late, a little E will pop up. Okay, so I'm hoping I don't see any Es, but in this case, obviously, Kim was late a lot throughout the year. I exaggerated it for our demo. So that's the work history tab. Electronic in-out board is a real-time feed of where are people right now? Who's in and who's out right now at this moment in time? I'm not gonna cover the reporting too much just because of the time that we have, but I will mention this one important aspect. You have about two hundred reports that come standard with the system and all reports can be generated automatically and emailed automatically. So if you know that you need a report, you can go into the time and attendance folder, find the report you need and then all these filters will come up. You can customize or tweak each report. You could change the output format, PDF, Excel, CSV, the date range for which employees do you wanna run this report for. Once you have the report looking and feeling however you want it, you can save it in your folder. This is private, only you see this. If you put it in the public folder, all managers will have access to that. And again, you can generate a report automatically and email it automatically. So a report every day could be created and emailed to you or once a week or every fifteenth of the month. Five more minutes and then we're done or two more minutes if that's all I have. The delegation module will let you know that you can automate coverage. So if you're gonna be out on vacation, another manager, you can delegate responsibilities. So Jim will cover for me from a specific start time to a specific end time. In my absence, if a request for time off comes over or a timesheet needs to be edited or approved, it's gonna be rerouted to Jim and. Soon as that end time hits, I'm back in the office, those hundred employees are back under my responsibility. The notification module sends out real-time alerts. If an employee was supposed to punch in and never punched in, we call that the no-show. After X number of minutes past an employee's scheduled start time, we can actually have a reminder go to the employee. "Hey Jamie, it's 9:25 in the morning, you're supposed to be at work today, where are you?" Unapproved timesheets. If a manager was supposed to approve a timesheet and right now there's some centralized payroll person that scrambles running around trying to get the timesheets approved, we can actually remind the individual supervisors, let's say Friday at ten in the morning, so perhaps they then get to it and at three in the afternoon, the payroll person is no longer scrambling. To process payroll, only a select few will have access to this portion of the system. Your payroll bridge will be defaulted to Alio. And you'll be able to pick, first of all, who, so again, payroll bridge will be defaulted to Alio. Pick who you're gonna process payroll for, an individual, department, the entire school. And then it kinda works from left to right. You'll run summary reports that you need to run. You can eyeball all of the data before you're in a position to export it out. Okay, so that's processing payroll. The very last thing is the dashboard, which is set up to be the very first thing that you see when you log in on a normal day. Okay, so dashboard is a series of shortcuts. Okay, whatever you do most frequently in Novatime, you put a shortcut on your dashboard. If I log back out and log back in again, on a normal day, you won't have a request for time off. So I click cancel and up pops my dashboard. Okay, you can drill through this. So if request for time off is important to me, I will be able to click the number two. It will take me right to the section of the system with my two pending requests for time off. Other shortcuts that I put on my dashboard is approaching overtime. Where you set a number of hours you care about. Any employee that's worked that number of hours, this pay period will display here. How many hours my department was scheduled versus what actually happened. A mini shortcut of my electronic outboard and a real live feed of any outstanding exceptions. Okay, so if I wanted to see, again, I could drill through this number to be taken right to the timesheets of one of the people with a missing punch. And I should also mention, if you're done working with an employee like him, you could scroll your mouse to the left and pull up a search bar. Where here, you could find all the people you're allowed to see. Instead of correcting missing punches one at a time, you have a daily timesheet management feature that allows you to see all of your employees side-by-side, day-by-day. So on Monday, maybe there were a lot of missing punches. Let me just click on Monday and I can get to three people on the same screen. Okay, so I'm a little short on oxygen. That is the quickest I've ever done it in eight years. But I'm hoping that some of you guys could retain some of that and what questions do you have?
Any questions for board members?
Oh, we have none, thank you.
Alright, any questions for you, Mr. Jamie?
I'm sorry, was there, no questions?
No, I think we're good on this end. Everyone has a copy of your package.
Okay, I guess, yeah, a few questions. When are you guys looking to make a final decision on which vendor to go with?
We don't, we don't know yet.
I think he's gonna have to have that discussion in the day with decide whether or not to make a recommendation.
Okay, will there be time clocks a part of the installation?
Mr. V, do you know if they'd be interested in time clocks as part of that quote? It would be a separate item that we'd consider, Jamie.
Okay, I should also mention that we do have an advanced scheduling feature that we didn't get to show today because of the lack of time, but I did include it in our quote. So if we just take a look at the quote, it's on the back-left side of the folder. The first line item is the main software license. That's how many people are we tracking. We've included a license for up to five thousand people and we've included up to twenty-five hundred for the advanced scheduling. So that may be like substitute tracking if you need it. This is optional, you don't have to have it. But the point of advanced scheduling is that you can set up rules behind the scene and then if somebody calls out sick, the system is smart enough to know who is capable of filling that shift, who's qualified or certified and who's also available. And if I'm gonna reach out to people to fill a shift, let me do it in some seniority order. And you guys will define with your Novatime technician what that seniority order is. So if you don't need that, that's fine. You could always have somebody call out sick and then a manager manually finds the best person to fill a shift. But if that takes up a lot of your time and that's a pain point today, the advanced scheduling manager is designed to automate that. If somebody calls out sick, we can actually fill a shift automatically with base rules we have. We could reach out to people automatically by text message, by email or by dialing their phone. And the phone entry module, line item, is if you want the functionality of having somebody being able to dial a phone number to call out sick, which then prompts the whole series of finding somebody. So I could actually dial out sick and then have somebody fill my shift without a human needing to be involved. We provided a four-year contract discount on all software prices. The time clocks are included in this quote because we thought they may be at that point in time needed, but we could always take them out. And then just know that we guarantee the rates for all four years. So if you take a look at the four-year cost, the total one-year cost, if we have hardware maintenance, this is only to protect the time clocks. Software maintenance is included already for free and software maintenance is your twenty-four-seven support, your unlimited training and your software updates. And then your twelve-month vendor hosting fee, that's your annual usage fee, but that's also, again, based on the numbers, five thousand employees and twenty-five hundred for advanced scheduling. So if we didn't have advanced scheduling, it drops the cost considerably. Hundred and seventy-six thousand a year versus the two-eighty-four. So there's, there's some discussion points that we probably need to have at a later point about cost to more accurately figure out what the four-year contract value is.
And along those lines, the hosting costs, is that an option that the district could host it on their own or go through you folks?
Yeah, there is a choice to host it on your own. However, you lose functionality when you do that. Not all of the features are available in the customer-hosted version of the system. And one of them is mobile apps. So if you wanted people to be able to do things from the smartphone, that will need to be a vendor-hosted solution. Another functionality that's vendor-hosted only is the advanced scheduling manager. So if you end up needing the advanced scheduling manager, we would need to go vendor-hosted. If you don't need mobile apps and you don't need the advanced scheduler, then I don't see a reason why we can't go customer-hosted.
Okay, thank you.
Another question I have is, have the references been contacted yet?
The predecessor in Human Resources has been collecting those. He's no longer with the district, but he has been collecting those and summarizing them.
Recommend that Falcon Schools, because they have Alio and certainly Ascension Parish Schools be contacted because of the relevancy with regional and also the payroll integration with Alio. Okay, and then my last question is, have I, in this short amount of time, been able to explain the Novatime system to everybody in the room?
Yes, the board members are satisfied and again, several of the people that sat in on the RFP are here, so I think they have some familiarity with it.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else that you need of me while you have me here?
I think we're good, Jamie. I appreciate your time.
Okay, alright, well, if any additional questions come up, please let me know. And you said, in regards to your final decision, you're not sure yet. Or may I just further ask one more question on if you think that's gonna be this year, is 2016? Or could this drag out to 2017?
I really couldn't tell you at this time, Jamie.
Okay. If I, if I- If too much time goes by and you guys forget what we've gone through today, it'd be my pleasure to set up another one.
Alright, that sounds good. I appreciate your time, Jamie.
Okay, everybody have a great day.
Uh-huh, bye.
Well, you've, you've heard all or seen all three presentations, what are your wishes?
Well, Dr. Argala, I think it's- My opinion is that in the year 2016, it's necessary that we automate what we can automate. I think it'll save us on personnel. I think we'll find efficiencies. We probably will find areas that we are wasting and areas that we can work more efficiently. Um, we probably will find areas that we are wasting and areas that we can work more efficiently. I think it'll be a savings. You know, this, it's hard to get an appreciation of the capabilities, and it's hard for us, I think, as the board, to understand the need, like, the areas of need that we have within the district. So I think we need a little more time, um, both with the board, the committee, and the staff, to really fine-tune what it is we need. Um, I was looking at the pricing, and for these three vendors, there's some variability between, um, two of them, but they're on the same order of magnitude. And then there's one that's tremendously discounted or less. And while that might be maybe that a bargain, um, I'm concerned that maybe we're not getting what we're asking for, or maybe there's some miscommunications, uh, when someone is multiple times more or less. I mean, we have three vendors here that presented two are within the same, um, threshold, and one is much different. I think that we need to figure out why, and figure out if is that a bargain that we need to take right now, or is that, uh, something that we need more clarification on? So I just think we need more time.
Sure. A couple things. We also noted the difference in the pricing. One of the benefits of that particular product is that it interfaces well with the existing software that we have in the district. What I'm concerned about is, um, we might be really taking on more than we can handle effectively. I believe that there's some efficiencies to be derived through accurate, accurate reporting of attendance, time and attendance. But I would also urge you to, let's begin with a pilot set of schools. If this is something that we want to go down this road and really invest in time and attendance reporting, that we would start with either some trailblazer schools, or start with the high schools, or start with the elementary schools, or start with the central office. Start with something that we can make sure we deploy to a high level of efficiency. I just do not believe with rezoning, with Southside High School that has to open in August 2017, with the board giving us authority to open a new high school in August 2017 also, that, and with versitrans-
Rerouting.
Rerouting, that we should be launching forty-two installations at, at each of our schools right now. So I would urge you that, I think we need to be thoughtful about the, the product that we choose to make sure it's the right one that fits our needs. And then I would urge you to start with a small group of schools that we could, um, train and deploy effectively.
I think that's a great suggestion. I don't know if the vendors are gonna, are gonna be willing to do that, but I mean, I fully support that.
I think the, I think the next step is obviously to, to really, uh, look at the material. The committee's already vetted, um, these presentations. You've heard them, brief twenty-minute presentations. You're looking at their pricing. I think the next step might be for some guidance. If you want the committee to go back and really ask some additional questions about what would it look like if we started with ten schools rather than forty-two? What would the pricing look like? What would the deployment look like and the training necessary? And then, uh, really, ask the committee to come forth with a recommendation about best, best-of-breed product to consider.
I have a question, and it might be more for staff, but if we had one of, each vendor pilot one school for one year, does that, does that integrate well with what we're already doing? Or is that-
No.